Thank you, councillor. I'm mindful that councillor Bradford is still not arrived. Right, okay, so does anybody want to make a contribution or do you want to wait for? Okay, we'll come back to that. I'm going to go to the floor now. I've had three educations. Sorry, four with yours, Jane, councillor Corbin. I've had an education from Anna Bain. Did you make an education to speak? Yeah, councillor Bain.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. But I'd like to take the opportunity to talk about the impact of the government's austerity has had on the backs of our working class. It's no coincidence that the poorest and most in need councils have been hit hardest by this government. And those that we spend most of our funding on, the poorest and most vulnerable, have been hit every which way by this government. Back in 2010, when the chancellor, George Osborne, said, 'We're all in this together', while in 2012, the chief secretary to the Treasury, Danny Alexander, told the Liberal Democrat Conference, 'We simply will not allow the books to be balanced on the back of the poorest and hardest'. In March this year, the Equality and Human Rights Commission published an analysis showing to the contrary to Alexander's pledge, changes to taxes and welfare payments since 2010 have indeed hit the poorest hardest. The overall impact of the changes made since 2010 have been dramatically to reduce the net incomes of the poorest households. The pain is also unevenly spread between men and women, especially single parents, whether they're in or out of work. And if you're a woman of colour, then you're likely to have been hit even harder. And disabled people are very hard hit, particularly those with severe disabilities. Households with both the disabled, adults and child can see on average a loss of at least £6,500 per year. The appalling two-child limit of benefits has hit large families. And the changeover of disability living allowance to personal independence payments has hit people with severe disabilities incredibly hard. Perhaps the most harmful of the benefit cuts is the four-year freeze on in-work age benefits and tax credits. This has seen the extraordinary and most obscene use of the phrase 'in-work poverty'. We used to think the best play out of poverty was to get a job, and this is no longer the case. The introduction of universal credit, whose original intention was to approve work incentives and family incomes, now penalises those that it's intended to help. In-work poverty is an oxymoron. It sums up this government's view of the working class people, that we are expendable, we should feel lucky to have any form of work, we should be grateful to accept the charity of other working class people through the use of food banks. The casualisation of work has somehow become normalised. I live in the picket line at Carmel Aids, where the company are trying to get rid of full-time staff and bringing in casual workers on less pay, poorer conditions and are easier to dismiss. At Mateline last week, I heard from staff who were on casual contracts, who could be called into work at 10 o'clock at night and be sent home at 11 because they're no longer required. And when they make the point that the buses have all stopped, they say, 'Well, walk or get a taxi'. Well, clearly they can't get a taxi because they haven't been paid for the work. Our set in entry, we heard mainly from women who were on the picket line, who were talking about the couple these changes to contracts. And they were saying that they're going to make sure that the working ends include Sunday and bank holidays, and that also meant that they were taking a pay cut. If they didn't sign those contracts, they were going to be sacked. When we were at the RMT during the seat fairers dispute against PNO, I was genuinely taken aback to hear that those seat fairers are paying less than their minimum wage, £2.86 an hour. They work eight weeks on, four weeks off. Those four weeks is considered downtime, so they don't get paid, sick pay, they don't get paid holiday pay, and they're not entitled to pensions. How is this allowed to happen? How did we come to this being normal as a society? And of course, what we're seeing is that this is not just the private sector that's exploiting workers. We've got the Royal Hospital, we've got HMRC, and we've got Network Rail, who've outsourced their cleaning staff to the private sector companies so that they can exploit the workers instead of being exploited.
Councillor Bain, can I just point out that this is a discussion about the budget?
That's what I'm coming to, Lord Mayor. I'm proud to work with colleagues that have brought us back in house here in Liverpool, where our agency staff have been making payments and working closely with the trade unions, we've improved services, and we've ended up saving money for the council. We've seen through the outsourcing contract, and we are making sure that our public sector partners should do the same. Lord Mayor, those in society who are at least able to challenge or fight have been hit hardest by this government. Lord Mayor, as councillors, we must speak up and speak out against the cruel political neoliberal ideology that's driving this government's agenda to attack the working class. And Lord Mayor, we know that there's likely to be an election in the next few weeks. If the Tories get back in, the suffering we see right now will be nothing compared to what Johnson and Walcott were reaping on cities like Liverpool. Lord Mayor, we must unite when that election is called. The only way we will ever see the working class, our rights, our children's rights, the environment, the economy and an equal society in this country, that this country and this city deserve, is if we are sure we have a Labour government at that election. Right, I'm Jeremy Corbyn. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor, for your contribution. Can I just, can I just make it known that this is going to be a very, very crucial debate? And in order to get the conversation focused back on the budget, what you make great points there and so many points, councillor Bain, let's try and stick to the budget for the next round of speakers. Can I ask councillor Paul Brand to speak? Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The presentation that we received from the mayor earlier and the director of finances is salutary. And we see many of the councillors already aware of the financial cuts that we've sustained. But that reflects just one half of the, or one side of the coin that we as a councillor have to manage, because the other side is rising demand for services in the city. My portfolio, we are, through demographic change, seeing a significant increase in the number of people resident in the city who are over 65 and who are 85. Very often, those individuals are accompanied with increased requirements for social care packages. We're seeing a rising number of people in the city living with dementia. We are seeing the associated consequences and costs of maybe shorting those people who are supported. What many people may not know is we're also, through medical advances and the care packages that children's services provide, seeing a larger number of people with medical and learning disabilities surviving into old age in a way that they will not have done in the past. We have a statutory responsibility to, and we would anyway because we are a caring councillor, but we have a statutory obligation to make sure that those individuals' needs are met, and we have very little discretion to make in the way that we meet them. Those demand pressures within the system are not adequately reflected by the way that we are funded from central government, indeed. By the contrast, we've seen that we've lost over 63% of our central government support since 2010. Public health, we see the ring fence granted in public health. The government talk a lot about protecting the NHS, but public health transfer levels in Liverpool and councils in 2013 has experienced a cut in absolute terms of that ring fence funding, over £8 million already in the relatively small grants we get here in Liverpool. And make no doubt that the effects of that, if we were to impose cuts on our drug and alcohol services, mean that families, the parents or carers who are maybe on the edge of care, don't get the treatment and support that they need, and those children and those relationships often break down and children can end up in care. We see an increase in the number of rough sleepers in the city if their support networks are broken down and they can't manage their substance misuse issues. We see an increase in the demand for sexual health services in the city funded from our public health grant. We see a rise in multi-drug addiction in gonorrhea across the western world and in parts of the northern cities already, and we are seeing a significant increase in the number of individuals accessing sexual health services in the city, which means that we have to maintain extra resources to fund those, to fund those attendances at hospital. The rising need and rising demand that we have to meet in this city is met with a one-off funding spending review. And although the mayor likely indicated that some of the grants that we weren't necessarily confident would be carried on, have been now indicated that they will be maintained. They don't represent new money, they represent just a continuation of the money that we are currently getting. So they don't necessarily meet the increased demands that we are seeing and the increased pressures. And as the mayor rightly said, and the director also rightly said, our capacity to raise some additional money for adult social care through a council tax preset is way less effective per capita in this city than it will be in a city with higher council tax bands because it raises lower amounts of money per property, because 80% of our properties are in band A or B. So it is a highly unfair and unequal way of meeting adult social care demand. The demand sits in places which have the greatest degree of deprivation, which tend to have the lowest council tax base. And to enable us and for the government to say that council tax presets are a sensible way of meeting rising demand, it makes no sense. In addition, we are unclear as to whether or not the new money that was announced in the spending review will be distributed fairly. Practice and history teaches us that conservative governments have always gerrymandered the funding formulas in a way that assists their areas and ways that assist them electorally. And if anyone has any doubt in that, you should look at the newly announced town fund, in which the couple of million pounds or the other, it was about £20 million, that was announced by the government, was reviewed recently by the Manchester Evening News in a great piece of informative inquisitive journalism. And they identified that almost every single town that was benefiting from that newly announced fund was a marginal conservative seat, or one that the conservatives hoped to win in the next general election. Hey, we spoke to Boris Johnson, Prime Minister, who expressed some surprise. Let's be under no doubt that the mere fact that large aggregate sums have been announced in the spending review probably is going to be taken over the hope that we're given by some indication that there will be more money made available, may well be smashed away from us by a gerrymandering of the funding formula. Lord Mayor, it is clear, I think, for everybody in this council, that the austerity that we have imposed upon us is a political choice from central government. Both in terms of the aggregate sums and in one in amicad that, you'll look on the Institute for Political Studies website, but clearly shows that for almost every cut to public service funding, the government, conservative-controlled government since 2010 has introduced some form of tax cut that almost balanced out the amount of spending cuts. This is an agenda to produce a small state. That political choice, though, of austerity, has been imposed and done exactly what George Osborne promised not to do, which is that it has been balanced predominantly on the backs of the poorest communities. But it also has a catastrophic effect in cost-shunting across the public services. We're seeing an increase in street rough sleeping, we're ready to see an increase in people who are forced into hospital because their support packages for them in the past are no longer maintained. We are seeing an increase in people suffering evictions because the housing benefit and housing grant support is no longer there to help them maintain their tendencies. We're seeing an increase in family breakdowns resulting in increased numbers of children in care. Lord Mayor, not only is this an unfair and immoral political choice, but the government's cuts have implemented a false economy across the public sector. They do not save money overall. And for that reason, Lord Mayor, I welcome the unified approach for a cross-party motion today, sending a clear and powerful message to government. This austerity must stop. Thank you.
Councillor Kushner, councillor Baran-Kushner.
Thank you, my honour. Sorry, sorry, response councillor Kemp, just things that were noteworthy. One is that you mentioned the last Labour government and the 2010 manifesto that you said that subsequently you weren't going to mention, but you'd already mentioned it. The other thing is that, is that you said that I might share with you that the impact that Brexit might have on our communities, but of course, that's what we said when, when we embarked on austerity with the Liberal Democrats, seeing hand in glove with the Tories in producing and devising the policies for some just over learning how we're suffering from today. So it would have been good to have heard that then. But I just want to focus on my area really, on something specifically related to the debate that we're having at the moment. And that is that even though we've lost £420 million in funding as a council, 63% of our budget, we are still being exploited by private organisations that are charging the council money for fees that support their investment vehicles, that they take over on to do their services. These aren't small private companies that are adding on extra five or 10% to make a profit. These are large, these are large companies in residential care and foster care, that in foster care market account for around £600 million worth of foster care spending throughout the whole country. They are responsible for 45% of all foster care placements. And these companies, although they may have been once independent local companies like Foster Solutions, Fostering Solutions, I think it does and it's shot on Smith and Roanoke, but they are not that anymore. They are part of huge holding companies. That one's part of it. Eighty-one companies that are part of a huge, have part of a huge holding company. And what they are is actually investment vehicles, because they're owned by financial equity companies. That one is owned by Stirling Capital Partners. And that, they are using foster care because of the regularity of the fees that they get for fostering, in order to attract investors, to increase the value of the company so they can set on later on that profit. So from 2012, when that company was bought by a huge, by a huge other private investment company, before they sold it to Stirling Capital, that between 2012 and 2015, they doubled the value of a foster care company, and they doubled the value of it by increasing the fees that they charge for councils like ours and others up and down the country, and also by trying to get as many, as many foster care placements as they possibly could. And the value, and it's a bit disgusting the way you're talking about this, but their main asset are foster carers, and the reason why they managed to, they doubled the value of the company between 2012 and 2015, they doubled the value of their company in three years, which is 33% increase in value of the company each of those three years by revaluing their key asset, which is a foster carer, from £50,000 per unit to £100,000 per unit when they sold it in 2015. That company has now had to, has now borrowed an additional investment that it has to pay back in 2022, 2023. And all those companies combined, those three big ones that are responsible for £600 million of that market, they have borrowed and have invested, have to pay back £750 million, £750 million. If you spread that across the country, that works out evenly to every council, that works out to about £8 million. And this is the point really, because these companies charge double what we pay our own registered foster carers. They charge more for residential care fees than we are going to be able to pay for the homes that we've already opened and the other ones that we're opening later this year and again next year, that we're going to have to pay these private companies. And they are, they are taking that money so that they can invest, pay back their investors and be good on those investments. So that when 2023 comes, you've got enough money to pay it back, that has to stop so we can talk about all these issues and things that we have in, in the council and we talk about them in the chamber. And I get, and I get, I'm not bored about talking about it, but I talk about it over and over again, because it's something that we couldn't actually do. As well as the government giving us our money back, these companies need to be told that it's unacceptable for a council like ours, whether they have the money or not, actually we haven't, for us to be exploited to finance these takeovers and these investment vehicles on the back of the most vulnerable children in our city. It's absolutely disgusting. And I invite every member of this council, across every, all parties, civic society, the press, the radio stations, the business sector, the voluntary sector, all other sides of the public sector, need to make it clear and write, I'll give everyone their addresses, the names of these people, and these organisations are writing them, and make it absolutely clear that the fees that they are increasingly charging to us are completely unacceptable. We are expending by £7 million in children's services, and I'll tell you why. Because we've got 30 children more in residential care services in Liverpool than we anticipated. And that, as well as being a cost to the children themselves, of course, that cost this city £4.5 million, £4.5 million. Not because that's the actual cost of looking after children, it's because we also have to pay back the profits of these companies so that they can make good on their investments. So we have to make that absolutely clear. We also have to make clear, every opportunity we need foster carers that are registered with these private companies, they have to come over to the city council. Because to combine, if we do those two things, we will save this council between £6 and £10 million each and every year, and we will probably improve the quality of our service, where we can secure our children's centres. We want that to come at 4% on our council tax. We all have to take responsibility for this. This is a problem and issue that we have for our city. And I welcome the fact that this is a cross-party initiative to go to the government and make it clear where the spending is. And we need to say absolutely clearly that the LGA have been saying, that other local authorities have been saying, that the voluntary sector has been saying, that there is just not enough money in councils to cover the needs of looked-after children up and down the country, but particularly in this city. But we need to say this, though, as well. There's no point in giving us some extra money for children's social care if you are going to revise in the fair funding review, how you fund councils, and you take disadvantage out as a weighting factor for councils, because you'll give it to us for children's social care and you'll take it away from somewhere else. And we need to tell the government that they need to introduce better and improved regulation so that we as councils can make sure that companies that have residential care provision in this city make those places available to our children, not to councils up and down the country for, for as much money as they can, as they can possibly get. And we also need to say that in adult social care and in children's social care, we need to take profit away.
Thank you, councillor Kushner. I've had indications from councillor Corbin, councillor Small, councillor Doyle and councillor Sam. So can you take your contribution, please, Jane, from councillor Paul, I should say.
Jezza. We're looking at the budget in the context of police cuts, about 30% now, education cuts, cuts to health, cuts to housing, all the 24 changes to welfare reform. And we're actually, as a council, picking up what's happening from all of those cuts out there, and they're piling down on us. And we've been trying incredibly well, I would say, and in a joined-up way, to look at how we respond to all of that. And we've been doing that over a number of years. So if you go back to the Phoenix Commission, Jo, which is element 2012, people, all the recommendations from that, which we're piling through. We've got the Getting By Report to see the voice of people most affected, which we use regularly. We changed our procurement strategy in September 16 to take on boards, good business that we would do, that we would procure with, rather than just go out to one third, driven by proper zillow. And we've gone through all our welfare reform community impact assessment and told the government to do one, and they refused and said they couldn't do it. Well, we did it anyway, we showed them how to do it, we took it down to government and they completely ignored it. And sort of gave evidence to select committees, they ignored that. There's no way that they don't know what's happening, they do know what's happening. We pay the real living wage, not the only messy living wage of the government count, and we do that also, one of the very few or perhaps the only local officials that do it from November, rather than waiting till April or April when it's set. We've got our fair city policy in there, that shows how we do fair business, and also we try and support all the anti-poverty strategies coming through. And just looking at some of the figures, since 2015, our top up, our council top up to discretionary housing payment to date has been £4.26 million. Now, you could say, well, it's a waste of money because people should be able to get that out of their back pocket. But of course, if they're deemed homeless, we have a strategy to use to pick them up, and that can be 10 times that, okay? So that can be £40 million that we're spending out on that, so that's a saving, although it's a cost to us. You look at the system support scheme, so when the government refuse to fund any further, that's our local welfare scheme, from 2015, we spent out just under £14 million on that. That's literally keeping people fed, keeping them warm, keeping them clothed, keeping with beds, mattresses, bedding, wardrobes, washing machines. Mayor's hardship fund that Jo set up, Mayor set up, an extra £2 million over three years, and that comes through all sorts of different ways, directly to individuals and also directly to the wards, so we can respond on that, on that level. You look at the council tax support scheme, that's cost us to date £24.3 million and more. So I can't miss much, much more than that, but that's, that's the minimum that it's cost us. And again, that is trying to support people, knowing how much they can pay, so we get money in as much as we possibly can. And then just taking one example, so our benefit maximisation team costs us £1 million annually, but brings in to the residents we're supporting at least £10 million. But of course, we don't see that £10 million, but we fund the million. So if you look at all that joined-up thinking and joined-up working, I'd just like to say as well across the city, we've got the voluntary community faith sectors, we've got the good businesses working with us. And I've got my, yeah, Ian, this is all your fancy port food, but, my John, thank you very much. So seriously, there's so many people across the city that are working together, I just want to say thank you to those, to those people there. But we've got to fight back, and we've just set an early budget, because all of our ethical working and ethical thinking and ethical practice and anti-poverty strategies, as people have said before, immediately goes out the window. Because we're not talking about a sane government here, we are talking about very, very right-wing bullington boys who actually just want to get in and they don't care, and they will direct the officers that send in, and all of that good work that is joined-up thinking and joined-up working will literally just go out the window. So just to finish on, as Liverpool, we fight back in our own unique way. And also as Liverpool, we're very good at linking up with all the other authorities, the core cities, the LGA, you need to get right the middle of it, because you've got some influence there as well, with the churches, with the faith groups, all of those guys, and we fight back together. And that's when the government gets scared, especially when Liverpool is in the middle of it. So just to finish on, Raymond Williams' quote, which I often use, great Welsh socialist, the attorney, a Welshman in the middle of this, 'To be truly radical is to make it possible rather than despair convincing'. So let's carry on doing that. Thank you.
Councillor Sam.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I watched the other night when David Cameron was interviewed, and with no remorse, no regret, no apologies, gave a defence around what his government had done from 2010 onwards around bringing in austerity. And it really was a political choice that was made by that government. And I think it was a failure, not just in terms of the human cost of austerity that we all see in our wards and in our communities across the city and beyond, it was a failure in terms of what it set out to do. In March 2010, government debt stood at 69.6% of GDP. That was three years into a global financial crisis. In March of this year, government debt stood at 85.2% of GDP. So in terms of reducing government debt, in terms of what it set out to do in economic terms, it was a complete annihilation, as well as the human cost on top of that. And I think if you look at how Liverpool has been affected by that, we've been disproportionately affected by the way in which that government and subsequent governments chose to implement austerity in terms of local government. It was a cut to the revenue support grant, to the mechanism, that was the equalisation mechanism between richer and poorer councils. So cities like Liverpool, with a lower council tax base than other parts of the country, were disproportionately affected by that because it was the government grant that was cut. What that's been replaced with, whether it's business rate retention, which of course, because we've got fewer businesses and despite the work that we're doing, we have fewer opportunities to raise as much money as in London and the South East and in other parts of the country, we don't get as much money back that we've lost. And even when we can raise council tax with the adult social care preset, it's regressive and we don't raise anything like the kind of money that we need to be raising, we need to be bringing in to the city from those sources. And set against all that is the cumulative. from those sources. And set against all that is the cumulative impact of austerity that we see across this city, where we see pressures on spending, we see need increasing. And Lord Mayor, yesterday I was talking to a foster carer and councillor Kushner talked about 30 extra children going into care in this city. And he said to me, tell anyone that this isn't to do with the cumulative effect of austerity. It isn't about stress and anxiety and pressures on parents that is causing children going into care. So all of that means that we've got more pressures in this city. But I'm going to talk about some of the opportunities to grow the economy because I think this really is the progressive way to deal with the situation that the city finds itself in at the moment. It's about investing into the future of our city, investing in public services, investing in infrastructure, investing our way out of this situation. And the multiplier effect of that, the benefit that that has of keeping money in communities in Liverpool, I think is hugely significant. The work that this council did, that this administration did with the Liverpool School Investment Programme, and I remember Jane as the cabinet member for schools when we lost BSF in this city. And I played a small part in that as cabinet member for employment and skills in looking at how we can link that into jobs, into supporting local businesses. And what we did with that was get something like 60% local spend. Money that went into Liverpool firms, that went into Liverpool jobs, that stayed in this city, that was reinvested in this city, that had a multiplier effect in this city. And I don't mean this as a criticism, but when the previous Lib Dem administration dealt with BSF way too, where we rebuilt West Derby School, King David, Gattaca, we only got a 20% local spend compared with 60% local spend. I genuinely don't mean that as a criticism. I mean that to say that when councils choose to spend that money locally, choose to work with businesses, to procure in a way that keeps that money locally, we really can make a huge difference. And I think there's some huge opportunities that we've got in Liverpool in the next few months and the next few years ahead with a local bank, with foundations, to be able to make an even bigger impact with that. And of course, it's important that we use Invest2A to spring in new revenue streams to the city council to support frontline public services. It's absolutely important that we do that to protect libraries and children's centres and all the things that we value. But we've got to go beyond that so that we can genuinely create community wealth building in Liverpool, that we can keep more money in Liverpool, supporting our businesses, supporting our jobs, supporting our communities, particularly the most vulnerable, disengaged and disadvantaged communities. And the watchword around Invest2A, the watchword around what we do about economic development in this city should be, how does it affect the poorest people in our communities, in our city? How does it affect the single mom living in Kensington? How does this affect a needy young person living in Speake? What benefits will that bring to them? So to conclude, Lord Mayor, I think this is a really good debate and a really good position that we should be in as a city. We should unite. And it's good that we can unite across all parties and across those of non-parties in this city. We need to be working with civil society, we need to be working with faith groups, we need to be working with trade unions, we need to be working with businesses. And we need to say with one voice to government, Liverpool needs fair funding. We need fair funding for our city, for our services and our citizens.
Thank you councillor Small. Then I think we can sit down.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I've been very brief. I was not going to speak. I just got scribbles without trying to sell my councillor card. But I tried to raise a few points. Actually, councillor Bennett's comments before, I feel actually quite relevant to this discussion because when we think about it, it is quite fitting because austerity has squeezed away from that every single penny that we've got. And what does that mean, what does that in turn mean, when you take money away from those struggling most? And put it wherever you want, top down economics and what we could say. Well, it means more reliance on council services and it means more reliance on council grants such as the counter tax board scheme. And so that was something that actually going forward, that the government had a massive part in actually tackling the issues brought here that we're facing. Now, we mentioned before Brexit and with respect, I mean, I absolutely agree with them with regards to the effect that it could have on our city, that it will have on our city actually. However, I do like to treat them as not two entirely separate issues, but they are different because while John Johnson tours the country, speaking about what he wants to deliver in the next government, I don't believe a word of what he says. Because he's only fighting this couple of election on one issue and that's his final project, that is Brexit. He's not fighting it on a fair deal circle or any other local authority in the city. That's why I'm actually the Liberal Democrat. I think it's quite, I won't say to you, it's a plain to his hand because it's not as simple as saying, I fight the election on leaving remain because there are these bigger issues and wider issues that need more space. And I thought we made a comment before actually, where you mentioned about setting, or we're in February, a one-year budget. And actually, you mentioned what the government and their responsibility in setting budget, obviously given the funding that we need and giving us time to plan. And that is crucial, that is absolutely crucial. But that's all again. And you think about, and we had a discussion about the maintained nursery schools. And we had a discussion about NHS and trying to fund their full fills and debts in funding as well. The fact is, this government has been irresponsible and neglectful of their duty to supply the demand and service and the funding that we need in this city and across the country. And so we speak, and we mentioned before, and Jo mentioned before, of the possibility and the potential of government commissioners coming to our council to oversee our budget and scrutinise what we do here. Actually, I think it's good for them to serve that visit because as I say, they've been neglectful of their responsibilities.
Thank you councillor Small. I'm going to bring in councillor Simon and then I'm going to go directly to councillor Bradford for this reason.
So, I think it's really important in this debate to look at the issues from two perspectives. I think having this special council this early on in the budget process is extremely important. Because it's extremely important for every single one of us to actually understand the finances of the council, how they work, how we work with our partners, both inside local governments and voluntary sector, and the cuts that those budgets, the cuts to the budgets to us impact on that. And most of all, how they impact on our communities right across the city and how they impact in very different ways for all of those negative. And I think from our work with the inclusive growth plan and how we've been looking at that bottom-up approach, from us actually looking at what our communities need, you know, we're having these discussions at the same time where we're seeing our budgets slashed radically. Well, I think sort of when we've done the discussions in the past, particularly overlooking, I think, the impact of those cuts and particularly people understanding where those finances come from, that is extremely important. Well, Mel was standing up before, we've all heard it on the doorstep, when people are making an issue where there'd be a vacuum cleansing, there're bins, rats and whatever, and they say, I pay my council tax. And that is the impression, because whether that's the impression they've been given, that all of the money they pay fully covers what we need to do as a city and quite clearly from those figures. So when we had the infographics one time before and we had stuff online, where actually people could try and build the budget themselves and actually say, right, I want to put all the money in children's centres, oh my God, all the libraries are closed, or 25 people haven't got a care package this week. Those things are really, really important to bring people on. And I just think people as well don't understand because they say, you know, the council don't do that, the voluntary sector do this. The amount of money that we put into the voluntary sector in this city, I would say, is second to none. Whether that be by direct funding or by commissioning. And certainly when the video was up before, we had the guy from the White House Centre, you know, without the money that goes in from those services, we'd shut, as would a lot of the voluntary sector and some of those community groups who are the lifeblood of our communities, who are actually signposting people in those dire straits. And it is really bad to be putting in over £60 million in one way or another, through hardship, whether that's through housing support, whether that's through the mayor or fund. And particularly those funds that we can react, imagine all that going. You know, we had a vote hall this week in our ward where somebody, you just give them the, should be one of the happiest moments of your life, couldn't come out of hospital and we had to fund a car seat because they wouldn't allow that person home without the car seat to get home. And they didn't have that. Now, if we didn't have that fund and an access to stocks that we could do, we've had children in our youth club fed every week, every night it's open, we've chosen to put some of our money that we get through that hardship fund. So all the children are fed, so they actually don't feel any differently because it is a massive issue. All of those things that we're doing, if our budgets are cut, we don't then have the flexibility to actually, you know, raise to that demand in our ward. So I think there's two things we really do need to understand, how the budget works and how we set our policies. We've had a lot of criticism, you know, whether that be through the press, through opposition parties, sometimes from our own board in respect of housing and housing strategy. Those figures show why you have to have mixed housing in this city, why you have to not just bring in the revenue from the council tax. We are creating fantastic jobs in this city through our investment, but people can't live here. So we're creating the economy for them to spend elsewhere, which means we're not creating other jobs or the expansion of small businesses. So when we're talking about community wealth building, the investment we've put into culture has led to massive small and medium-sized enterprises being able to thrive in this city. So we do have to look at the wider context of our policies and housing is one of them. And people really need to understand the economics of that. If we've got hyenas coming to work here, but they'll only go and live in Chester, the Wirral, Sefton, you know, or way to Manchester, then we're not benefiting from the investment we pour. And so we need to really understand fully. And I think more sessions like this, I think when we start to, you know, meet with officers, coming back to smaller, it's important. When we set them, people come along and understand us for all of us. It's very easy to criticise, it's very easy to say we shouldn't do that. Actually, it's harder to come up with solutions. And when those services are being cut years on years, I would give a massive thanks to our staff. Our staff have worked so hard and we expect them to do it. We are missioning ourselves. We want the best in this. Particularly people going in education, social care, things that are inspected. They want excellence year on, year off. And actually, the pressures that are on those people, we've spoken here about mental health and our workforce and our trade unions have been second to none. Obviously, all the time protecting their workers' rights, which they need to do, but fully understanding the situation we're in and want to work in partnership. So yeah, we all do need to work together. We need to work as a city, we need to work with other cities, we need to get those messages out. And we do have to speak with one voice, but we also need to understand, truly understand the challenges we face and come up with solutions, innovative solutions, solutions we can all live with and to protect the things I've fought for all my life.